I open the meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. This is on, right? Okay. Before we get started tonight, I would like to just start off this evening by taking a moment of silence just in memory of one of our community members and dear friend to many of us, Ms. Lori Fazel. If we could just take one, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Dye.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Shonar.
Present.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Okay. At this time, the meeting is open to the public on, for comment for items on the agenda. There is nobody on the sign up for that portion, so I will close that portion. And I will move on to committee reports. So I have a couple things I would like to speak to. First, on June 8th, I attended the Orange Invitational. It was a, an exciting event to honor one of our, another one of our community members, Mr. Tifuri, who is battling cancer. It's just another example of how our community comes together when one of our own is in need. I really enjoyed watching the students battle against each other and the students battling the teachers. I will have to admit that there was an instance where a ball went off a teacher's head and, you know, I'm not going to say who did that. So it was really, it was a great evening to watch the community once again come together and fight for the people that we love. So that was a great showing there. So thank you to that, everyone who participated. I also, on June 9th, attended the Pride Raising, our second annual Pride Raising Flag Ceremony at the Board Office. It was really a touching event. We had people from the community, we had, our students came down, our GSA members came down and spoke so elegantly. We had our choir that sung beautifully. It just was really a touching event, so I was really proud to be a part of that. And then on June 13th, I attended the Security Meeting, and I want to just say first, thank you to Mr. Grosso and the panel that presented that night. Mr. Kinney was there as well. Thank you for doing that. But I also want to thank the community for taking the time to attend that meeting because this is the way that we continue to keep our lines of communication open. As we move forward, we will continue to be offering these types of events, and it's really important that the community attends them. So we had a really great showing. I thought it went really well. And so thank you for taking time to attend, and thank you to Mr. Grosso and the panel who presented that evening. That's it for me. Mrs. Miga.
Good evening, good evening to everyone here and watching at home. On June 6th, I attended the Town Council Meeting. And just to report back to you all, if you're interested, on July 4th, or the fireworks, I'm sorry, not on July, the 4th of July fireworks will be on July, on June 30th with a rain date of July 1st, once again at Panther Park, the way that they have been the last several years. Also, the Miss Paul Alliance movies are back this summer with the first one on June 28th. These movies begin at dusk, which they claim is around 8:45, and they are weather permitting because they are at Morgan's Farm. And the movie June 28th is Encanto. June 8th, I also attended the Orange Invitational, which was put on by the high school sports management class. It was a very well-attended event, and the students and the staff did a great job running it. On June 9th, I attended Scholarship Night, and I would like to congratulate all that have awarded scholarships, and thank you to all that provided these scholarships to our students. The total local scholarship amount given out was $126,425, which went to 59 students up here. On June 13th, I also attended the Security Meeting, and the meeting was well-attended with varying points of view on security, and I appreciate all the input. On June 14th, I attended a very informative Flag Day event, which was hosted by the Girl Scout Troop 20278. And they explained about the American flag and had the, had flag-themed events for the children. I would also like to congratulate all of our graduates, who will graduate next week, and wish everyone a wonderful, fun, safe summer.
Thank you. Mr. Marzullo?
I did not have the opportunity to attend any committee meetings that had met in between the two board meetings. I did have the opportunity to attend the Orange Invitational, which I thought was fantastic. It was fun to see the students interacting with the teachers and the faculty members. I do want to report, I do speak to Mr. Tifuri on a regular basis. I'm glad to share that he has gotten a good report with his health, and it's looking positive. He is looking to pave forward. He's a, he's a positive mind, set mind frame. He looks to help others. So, you know, that Invitational was, was great to see, and he just wants me to express his thanks and gratitude to everyone. And that's, honestly, that's about it. And I just want to thank also our Scholarship Committee and those that contributed to the scholarships. You know, our students are going to benefit greatly from them, so thank you to those who contributed to that, all the organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Shonar?
I attended the Scholarship Night. It was a fantastic night. It was really great. It was a lot of nice surprises, and the volume of money that the kids got, I think, was just fantastic. And it was a great way to see all the hard work that kids did. So it was a nice evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Dye?
I also attended the Scholarship Night. I echo Mr. Shonar's sentiments, and a special thank you to Ms. Testa, who ran a very smooth event. It went quickly, and that was nice, and it was nice for everybody. I also wanted to give a shout-out as a thank you to the Cedar Grove Artists Alliance for their fundraising efforts. They created the shirt I'm wearing, the Panther Pride Shirt, and some of the proceeds, they're going to make a donation to the GSA Club at the high school. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Okay. So tonight, we have several board presentations. I'm just going to announce all of them, and then so we'll go from one into the next. The first, we are, we'd like to honor the Director of the Year for the, a presentation to honor our Special Education Director of the Year for the 21-22 school year. And then, following that, the Teacher of the Year for the 21-22 school year. We have some sports presentations tonight. We'd like to recognize our student athletes, division and sectional champions. And then we also have a presentation from our Progressions Program, which I'm excited to hear all of this, so.
Well, I'd like to call Mr. Kinney up to the front. Mr. Kinney, just a little, just a little background, we've, I'm sorry. We have 23 districts in Essex County, and every district has a Director of Special Services who oversees all special education personnel, programming, departments, et cetera. This year, our own Mr. Kinney, who is the Director of our Special Services here in Cedar Grove, he was awarded the Director of the 2021-2022 Director of the Year. Let's give him a round of applause. So on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education, the public schools, we have a proclamation that we'd like to read to you and honor you with. So it states here on June 15th, 2022, "Whereas the School District of Cedar Grove recognizes the valuable contributions from the Department of Special Services to our community, and whereas the area of special education provides the foundation, training, and leadership skills to prepare our youth to be the success, to be successful. And whereas Christopher Kinney, the Director of Special Services for Cedar Grove Board of Education, has served the Cedar Grove community for years, and whereas Christopher Kinney, the Director of Special Services for Cedar Grove Board of Education, has served the County of Essex as one of 23 Directors for the public schools, and whereas Christopher Kinney, the Director of Special Services for Cedar Grove Board of Education, has been recognized and awarded by the Essex County Directors of Special Education as the 2021-22 Director of the Year. And now, therefore, we, the Cedar Grove Board of Education, hereby present this proclamation to Christopher Kinney for the dedicated and devoted services he performs as the Director of Special Services. Congratulations."
I'd just like to thank the Board of Education for the recognition tonight. Without their support, Mr. Grosso's support, Mr. DeVita's support with the special education programming, not only now, but their insight and allowing the vision of not only myself, but my child study team, my special education teachers, even the input of my general ed teachers as far as program development, we would not have half of the programs that we have today. I also appreciate the support of my, my parents that I deal with as well, who are here to support me tonight, and I thank them for that. My, my parent advisory committee members, the Realize Committee members, past students who have graduated, who I do cherish and love every moment that I've had to help them along in their journeys. So I thank them for coming, and my family tonight. So thank you again for the recognition, and hope for many more years to come serving in this role. Thank you.
All right. At this moment, we'd like to recognize some very important staff members. So every year for the past, oh, I have to say, over, I'll say over 10 years, the state of New Jersey has recognized the power and the impact that teachers have on their students. And once a year, quite frankly, it should be more than just once a year, they are recognized by their peers, by their students, and by the families. And this year, our recipients of the New Jersey Governor's Teachers of the Year, we would like to call them up and present them with an award from the Commissioner, recognized by the Governor of New Jersey. I will share with you, this is a very high honor, especially when you are recognized by your own peers. It is something that is very near and dear to an educator's heart. I will say this truthfully, educators don't always get recognized. Very often, they do the work that is just absolutely impactful to the development and the success of students to become well-rounded adults. So this is a nice moment for, for the teachers to shine. So a little background as well is that there are two categories. There's a teacher category, and then there is a support services. And that, that could, the support services could be a member of the child study team, it could be a paraprofessional, et cetera. So these are individuals that dedicate their life's work to impacting the work they have towards, they, they display towards children. So the first person I'd like to call up from the high school, representing the high school, is Mr. Steven Gallagher. The next person, oh, you want to do one individual? Yeah, we'll do a group, then we can do an individual. Okay. The next person I'd like to call up is Colleen Merklinger. From, from the middle school. The next person I'd like to call up is Laura Hartchen. From the middle school. The next recipient would be Ms. Dana Placenti. From South End. And finally, from North End, Ms. Kristen Masato. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your 2021 recipients.
Good evening. I first would like to congratulate all of our spring athletes and teams on a successful spring season, but tonight I'm excited to honor our spring championship team and athletes this evening on behalf of the Board. It's going to be a little bit of a track and field celebration here tonight. This spring, for the fourth time in school history, and first time since 2012, our girls' track and field team won the Super Essex Conference Independence Division Championship. So please give them a round of applause. They had a dual meet record of six and one, and they finished it off at the SCC Championship Meet by winning the, winning the division for the first, fourth time in school history. So, you know, the, the track season's unique because they kind of go through the division of dual meets and play each school or compete against each school, but they, it doesn't really count, you know? They got to finish it off at the SCC Championship Meet, which this year they got over the hump there and took home first place. So congratulations again, girls. In addition to that, two of our track athletes won NJ SIA North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Championship, so finishing as state champions this spring. The first was Endri Zalari, who was a state sectional championship, a North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champion in the shot put event. So congratulations to Endri. And Tara Smurla, you know, continued her dominance this senior year. She was a state sectional, North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champion in, in two events, both the 1600 meter and 3200 meter event. And I would like to just, you know, give props, a little extra props to our track and field team this year. We qualified for 16 Group 1 events to the Group 1 Championship, which is an outstanding accomplishment, by far the most since I've been Athletic Director here. So just an overall for both the boys' and girls' teams, huge accomplishment to qualify for, for 16 events in the Group 1 Championship. And Tara has also advanced to the Meet of Champions this weekend in the 1600 meter. I would like to, for them to stand up and get some acknowledgement, both the head, both the head coaches, Coach Colleen Merklinger. And Coach Vincent Lepotto. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Dora, she's going to read the proclamations for us.
They couldn't do it without you. Okay. I apologize in advance if I mess up on your names, so I'm going to do my best here. Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Girls Track and Field Team on their championship. Whereas during the spring athletic season of 2022, the Cedar Grove High School Girls Track and Field Team won the Super Essex Conference Independence Division Championship. Whereas this team had a dual meet, Super Essex Conference Independence Division record of six and one. Whereas this team took first place at the Super Essex Conference Independence Division Championships. Whereas the 2022 team roster was Dia Bavishi, Cassandra Bevins, Naveen Bagurio, Anna Chiyakowsky, Alexandra Eustace, Amanda Eustace, Marina Fahim, Sienna Giordano, Sophia Gonzalez, Jasmine Judith, Judineth, Alyssa Malik, Kate Melito, Julia Pineda, Lauren Rizzolo, Tara Smurla, Alexa Wolf, Isabella Zahn, and coaches Colleen Merklinger, Vincent Lepotto, Alyssa Lever, Ryan Corbassero, and Ed Pachowski. Now, therefore, I, Dawn Dora, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Girls Track and Field Team and wish them the very best of luck in their future. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, so we can't stop there. This proclamation will be congratulating Cedar Grove High School's Tara Smurla on her spring track and field championship season. Whereas during the spring athletic season of 2022, Tara Smurla placed first and won the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 1600 meter track and field championship event. Whereas during the spring athletic season of 2022, Tara Smurla placed first and also won the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 3200 meter track and field championship event. Whereas during the spring athletic season of 2022, Tara Smurla, guess what, placed first and won the 800 meter, the 1600 meter, and the 3200 meter events at the Super Essex Conference Independent Division Championship. Whereas Tara Smurla broke and set a new Cedar Grove High School's school records for girls' track and field in the 800 meter, the 1600 meter, and the 3200 meter events. Whereas Tara Smurla earned First Team All-Conference, First Team All-County, and First Team Group 1 All-State for her 2022 accomplishments. Now, therefore, I, Dawn Dora, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate Cedar Grove High School's Tara Smurla and wish her the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations. Okay. All right, our next presentation will be our Progressions Program.
Hello. My name is Mrs. Valenzano, and I am the Teacher of the 18 to 21 Progressions Program. We are located right here in the high school, in the E Wing. This is Ms. Ricka. She is our behaviorist. We also have two paras, Ms. Mary Ann DiNicolà and Ms. Kathy Natoli. Well, before she starts, I'm just going to do a little background. So I have been in the special ed, um... Field, thank you. Just a little nervous. Special ed field for 20 years now, mostly in private schools, so this is my first time in a public school. And, you know, I just want to do a quick thank you to Mr. Kinney, the Board of Ed, for starting this program. We have some great young adults right now, and our program is growing, and we just want to thank the community as well for supporting us, you know, now and in the future.
All right. So this is our sample 18 to 21 schedule. This is a typical day for a student. Now, because everything in our program is so individualized, this would not look the same for every student. So you'll see that we have some job placements, CBI, which is our Community-Based Instruction. We build in time to work on individual skills. We build in time for, you know, grocery planning. We have a life skills room, which we utilize, and social skills. And we're going to touch upon a lot of these things that you see in our schedule, but just to give you kind of an overview of what our day could look like. So our program uses the assessment of functional living skills, which is a way that we can assess in track using data the progress of our students. This helps us to evaluate areas of basic living, home skills, community participation, independent living skills, vocational skills. This is also not possible without the support of our parents, who sometimes answer questions for us that maybe we don't have all the answers for. So we really appreciate how amazing our parents are in the program as well. But this is something that we can, you know, evaluate their progress over time, since they are with us for a few years. One of the wonderful things that, thank you, Mr. Kinney, we appreciate this one, but we are using Catalyst. Catalyst is a, a data platform that we can use to collect our data, track our students' progress. This is no one's actual data, but what is really important about it is that it is digital. So we can use our phone. It is not noticeable to our students. It's not noticeable when we go out in the community. We can use it on our phone, we can track things, and it looks just the same. It's, it's not going to be very stigmatizing if we're walking around with like a notebook or collecting data that way. But we can use it to, you know, track their job progress, individual goals, any towards, any types of behaviors if they are, if there are any, and then make systematic changes and then make systematic changes based on our data. So one of the important features in our program is building independence and building self-advocacy. So we use Self and Match, which is an evidence-based program that is individualized and it can be used individually, or it can also be used class-wide. It promotes self-monitoring using a match component. So as our students are learning to self-reflect on their goals, on their behaviors, we're also having a conversation with them about it. And this is what's really important, because we want to set them up for success, not just when they're with us, but once they're no longer with us. So I think that's a really big, important piece. Another thing is that they 100% are involved in making their individual system. So we have conversations about what their goals are. We incorporate their interests into the match component. So it could be smiles. It could be yes, no's. It's what they like it to be. And that's what's really nice about this. So some other ways that we present material is we use a lot of checklists. We use visual and written. We have schedules. We do use some trial-based instruction. We chunk our materials. We use a lot of practicing in the life skills room before we go out and practice, either on the job or in the community. And we have wonderful peers, which actually some of them are here and they are wonderful. But they also do some peer modeling for us in our peer group, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So one of the things that we like to use in the community is not just, you know, pre-made materials. We like to use real materials that come from the community. So we use, you know, real pictures of the streets that they're going to be navigating, real pictures of the grocery stores and things that are going to be familiar to them. We use, you know, when we go to the mall, we, you know, practice using the map and the guide in the classroom setting first before bringing it to the community. So they're getting continual practice, not only in the community, but in the classroom as well. So one of the other ways that we work on our skills is that we, you know, we shape our skills and we shape our skills, you know, that target long-term life goals. So for instance, here you're seeing maybe a beginning step where, you know, we're having some words highlighted, our first then. Maybe we're working on prepositions. And then there's some visual support still. And then as we move on, it is a little bit more, you know, written language and there's still visuals, but there's some things that they need to do. There's some directions involved as well. And eventually, those supports, you know, will be faded out and then they'll have just written instructions. That could be following a recipe. It could be following a task for a job. So depending on, you know, what we're targeting, we help support in those different ways. Social skills is a very large component of our program. It's important to build natural opportunities in. And again, we are very thankful that we have such a supporting community that embraces our young adults. And, you know, in the high school as well, we have wonderful peers. But we utilize scripts. You know, we have natural opportunities. We also have peer-mediated opportunities where our peers can use some of their interests to, you know, create opportunities for our young adults. We use social skills games to make it fun. And we also practice self-regulation strategies. So these are just some other ways that we build in some social opportunities. We, you know, Mr. Valenzano has invited us into many of his gym classes to have an opportunity with his students. Because again, we use a lot of our peers' interests, our young adults' interests, to build in these opportunities. So what it might look like this year might not necessarily be the same of what it looks like next year, because we'll have, you know, new students. We use Jeopardy games that they really enjoy doing. Art, you know, during the holidays. And music, because we have a wonderfully talented para-professional with us, Ms. Mary Ann, who can play music. So hidden talent of hers. She didn't share until recently. But we really appreciate that as well.
So, like Ms. Melissa said, we do have a life skills room here in the high school that provides us with a washer dryer, a refrigerator, a stove. So our young adults are able to go in there and practice skills that they might need help on, you know, things that we might take for granted every day. We work on these skills weekly with them. So here are young adults, you know, shopping for detergent and doing laundry. We also have a couch in our life skills room that pulls out to a bed. So we make sure our young adults are making their beds. Then we ask them every morning to make sure that they make their beds at home to help, you know, out their parents. We have our young adults cleaning up after themselves, you know. We take pride in responsibility. You know, you make a mess, we need to clean it up. So our young adults will sweep, will wipe down the tables after they eat, vacuum. So Fresh Grocer, we make fresh... We make fresh... We make weekly grocery lists for Fresh Grocer. It is very convenient. That is right down the street. On nice days, we take walks there. We generalize this skill in the classroom and we bring it to the actual store. So here you can see we use the computer because it's so much easier than actually getting the circular. So our young adults here are making a list. We ask them what they want to make for lunch, or breakfast, or snack. Then we ask them to find it on the website. Then we take that list. The following day, we go down to the store and they go shopping. So they have to find their items. They either use a cart or a basket, depending on how many items they need. So we also practice these skills not only in the community, but we practice them before we go. So we have a mock scanner in our classroom. We also have items, you know, empty boxes and cans that we use so they can practice bagging. So we practice this ahead of time and then we're able to use this in the community. And you can see our young adults also pay for their items, whether it be a credit card or cash. So they're getting these skills as well. So culinary skills. So after you go shopping, you want to make what you bought. So we have recipes with visuals on them for our young adults to follow. And then after, we like to see if they actually liked what they made. And if it's a hit, we make it again. If not, onto something new. And I could say that goes for my children as well, you know. If you like it, I'll make it again. If not, forget it. So we practice our oven and stove safety. Here our young adults are making quesadillas. This was a big hit. Here they are following one of our visual recipes. This was another hit. We made yogurt parfaits, I would say, weekly for about a few months, because that was a huge hit. We have baked for their birthdays. We've baked for the holidays. So we are practicing oven safety. And then who doesn't like an ice cream sundae? So this was one of my favorites that we made.
So we also have some wonderful additional resources we have built into the program. We have health and wellness activities with our PT, Mr. Chris. And this is a time where, you know, they're working on, I mean, obviously physically getting stronger, but we're talking about following directions. We're talking about taking care of our bodies, the importance of nutrition and, you know, a healthy lifestyle, which is all part of being a young adult. We have Primatic Speech with our SLP, Ms. Cara, who comes in. Another thing too that's important is, you know, we have a lot of coordination of care. You know, we're continuously having conversations with all of our, you know, additional supports. So that way, you know, we're all having the same goals and supporting our students in an appropriate manner for each of them. And then we also have our Functional Occupational Therapy with Ms. Megan and Ms. Kim. And again, you can see, you know, working on place settings. We're working on, you know, making beds. We're working on various skills that help support our young adults in their independent living. So we mentioned the vocational piece in the assessment and this is something that kind of correlates with that, is our job readiness skills. Is we, you know, practice interviews, resumes. You know, we use visual reminders. We utilize scripts, which help support them initially, and then we fade those out as they become more comfortable speaking about themselves, which is hard for a lot of us, not just our young adults. But we discuss appropriate work attire, you know, what would be appropriate for what settings. And again, those are things that we don't only discuss in the classroom, but we go out in the community and we practice and have those conversations. Grooming and hygiene. We discuss problem-solving, conflict resolution, how to get along with coworkers. You know, what if you don't agree? We practice different scenarios and have conversations about what do you do in that situation? And body language, which is so important because, you know, the ability to read what other people are trying to convey doesn't come easy for everyone. So this is something that we really practice with them. And active listening. Because, you know, in order to return those conversations, we need to understand what is being said to us. And that's so important in an interview.
So, one of the positives that we always had from the beginning of the year was being in the school. So we are able to utilize the staff to help us with our vocational skills. So one of the jobs that we came up with right from the beginning was copying. I mean, who wants to copy on their prep? I wouldn't. So we offered this to our teachers. And as you can see, we have our Teacher of the Year up there, Mr. Gallagher, who does utilize this service. We thank you. But we also, you know, so we made up a flyer. There's two ways that our staff members can order our service. One is filling out a Google form that we have sent out a few times during the year, just as a reminder. And then one is a paper slip that they could put in our mailbox. So they fill out what date they need pickup, their name, where to pick up, when they need it by, and any special instructions. So our young adults have become very familiar with the copier machine and usually within a half hour, your job is done. We've also had other requests in the building. We have built furniture. We, like I said before, we sweep up, you know, any mess after lunches or after snack. And then we also collate papers. So our music teacher, Ms. Justin... Jen, Justin? Had a musical in the beginning of the year and she asked us to put her programs together. So our young adults were able to help with that as well. We have a wonderful custodial staff. Mr. Cusamano was more than willing to help one of our young adults get a job in the building. So after lunch, he goes down and works with him in the cafeteria. Mr. Cusamano was able to verbalize instructions two times, you know, Monday and Tuesday. And then by Wednesday, our young adult was able to complete the task by himself with minor supervision. Mr. Gorgody was kind enough to allow us to help put out flags for soccer season. Our young adults actually logged in their daily planners what day... What days the home games were. So they knew, you know, on September 13th, you know, we had a home game, so we had to go outside and set up the flags for the soccer game. We also started a laundry service for our staff. So our young adults have already been utilizing our washer dryer in the beginning of the year to get some practice and we decided to open it up to the staff. We passed out a flyer. We... I don't think we have a Google form yet, but maybe we will next year. So it's $5 per bundle. We fold, we hang up your laundry. However, you know, like I said, same instructions are given and our young adults follow that.
So we also have a young adult that has been job sampling at North End School. And they're having an opportunity to assist with prepping materials. It could be, you know, cutting. It could be organizing, but also interacting with the students. And then another huge piece is accepting, you know, feedback. Taking feedback from the teacher and then being able to, you know, work on those skills. All right. Another thing that we have is that we sell buttons and magnets. You're going to see a lot of different small businesses within this. And it'll make a little more sense once we get to the end, I promise. But we have buttons and magnets that our Progressions Peer Club was selling. And this was for our autism awareness and acceptance. Our students got an opportunity to practice their money skills, our consumer math, to be able to assemble and follow directions. They had an opportunity to interact with our our great staff that purchases all of these buttons and a lot of the students as well. And it gives the students in the high school an opportunity to meet our young adults if they have not had the chance already. And we do donate our proceeds. So for instance, we were at the Orange Invitational and we did donate all those proceeds to Mr. Tifuri because we believe it's really important, because the community has supported our program so much, that we give back as well. And I think that's a really important thing that we want our students to take away as well, is just to overall be kind and what good things you put out are going to come back. Oh, and we will, this month, we are collaborating with the GSA and we're going to be having buttons and magnets for them as well.
So this might be one of our biggest hits right now. We are all animal lovers and we all have pets. So we decided to make dog treats. So we have Progressions Paws for Caws, pet treats for your furry friends. So, right now, our treats were available to the buildings within the district. So our high school, middle school, the elementary schools, and LRP. We plan on opening it up to the community next year, so if you have dogs, you know, they're big fans.
We will be offering a cat option.
Yes, we will be offering a cat option as well. But our young adults have utilized our skills from making our grocery list. So we found a recipe that was nut-free. So it is safe. I do not suggest eating them because my children have tried them and they don't like them. They are, you know, all ingredients are people-friendly. I must say, Mr. Kinney also tried one too.
People say, people say.
People say, but pet approved. So our young adults, we have a recipe. We made our grocery list. We went shopping. And they have made these treats and they were super popular. You could see that you're utilizing their skills with... Well, I'll go back, but following a recipe, you know, using kitchen tools, using measuring cups. So these are all skills that we've been working on to just build, you know, their repertoire and... Thank you. To allow them to be able to help at home as well. So here they are now, after everything is mixed, you know, rolling out the dough, cutting it with cookie cutters, placing it on the sheet pan. You know, we end up baking it. We also deliver on Fridays, so we were able to go to all the schools. And our young adults brought them in and delivered to each individual who ordered, got the money. And we also had a table at the Puzzle for Autism. And we also had a table at the Puzzle for Autism tournament. Ms. Trupia was nice enough to allow us to have a table there, and proceeds that we made from that, we donated to Realize as well. Oh, these are just pictures of our dogs. We couldn't help but put them in, so you can see, they are pet-approved. We also had the opportunity to work at the Garden Center in the fall. Our young adults were able to follow directions given by a supervisor not known to them. So, this was someone that worked at the Garden Center. They were given, they were given feedback by the supervisor, you know, they had to make bows for holiday wreaths, and if something was made incorrectly, the supervisor corrected them, and they had to do it again.
So, we are very lucky to have a bus as part of our program, and so we're able to go out on community outings, such as the Woolbrook Mall, which you saw, the map in the beginning of the slides, and practice our skills. You know, we talk about community safety, how to navigate the mall, how to order from menus, and how to get what it is that you're looking for. How do you navigate the mall? What's the best store choice? And those are all conversations that we have in the classroom setting, and then we transfer into our community setting. So, some additional places that we have visited, Target, Kohl's, Five Below, Dick's Sporting Goods, Home Goods, Ulta, Dollar General, GameStop, CVS, and again, all different places that, you know, we are talking and targeting about different things. You know, leisure activities with, you know, Dick's Sporting Goods, picking out, you know, sporting wear, finding the appropriate sizing. These are things that we're also talking about with our vocational skills, with our appropriate clothing, how to find the right size, what would be more appropriate for home versus your job. If you can't find the right item, it's not your size. Using the scanner and looking up, maybe a store in the area has it. These are all conversations that are, you know, occurring in the community. Another favorite place that our students went was Pilgrim Diner, where they were able to practice appropriate interactions in a restaurant, ordering from a menu, making small talk, you know, talking with the waiter, how to gain their attention. And then Applegate Farms, which they just love ice cream. But it was also an opportunity for them to practice ordering money skills and interactions. One of the things that we practice is, if anyone's been to Starbucks, you know there's always a wait. So, waiting in line, you know, how long do you have to wait? Waiting for change, checking your receipt. If someone messes up an order, how do you appropriately, you know, correct that? And those are all things that we practice in these settings. And also utilizing a budget. We'll often give our students a set amount of money that they're allowed to spend, and so we have to make sure we're choosing items that fit our budget. Enjoying pizza Giuseppe's, again, ordering, having those appropriate interactions, paying and taking ownership of, you know, what they're purchasing. Our leisure activities that also promote healthy lifestyles. Both of our students love the park. That's something that they enjoy doing on their own in their free time. So, you know, we picnicked in the park, we, you know, talked about how this, you know, walking keeps you healthy. We're having those continual conversations, because it's always an opportunity to be practicing our skills. And you guys might have noticed, in the very first picture of our slide, there were penguins. And I know our peer members know the story, but not everyone here does. But our students did not know each other in the beginning of our program. And so, as, you know, one of the things we do is we build a relationship with them, and we found out that they're both animal lovers. So, we decided that a zoo trip would be the most appropriate for them to get to know each other, for us to get to know them. And there was this penguin, you see in the bottom, that followed both of them back and forth across the tank. And it was like this bonding moment that happened for our students, and they decided that we were lovingly going to be the penguin room. So, it kind of became a little mascot, though we are the Panthers. In the Progressions program, we have a little additional mascot, thank you. We went mini golfing. Again, these are opportunities that our students can practice their leisure activities, and things that if they want to invite out other friends, other peers, these are appropriate activities that they can partake in. And we discussed the rules of the game. We're discussing turn-taking, waiting, and also, both of our students got holes in one, and we're a little jealous that, how good they are.
So, I know I might sound like a broken record, but about being in the school, we have so many opportunities, and one of the biggest ones that we found was the peers. So, we decided to start a Progressions Peers Club. So, we started this because we only have two young adults right now. We will increase next year, but just having, you know, two young adults and then myself, Ms. Rika, and our two paras, we wanted more social opportunities for them. So, we decided to start a club. Very successful. We have about 17 members right now. And we wanted to do this to not only have the interaction, but also to open up ourselves to the school. You know, sometimes we walk around, and the students might not know who we are or what we're doing in the school. So, we wanted to, you know, say, hey, we're here, you know, come hang out with us, help us with our young adults, help us with our social skills, you know.
And I think we also saw an opportunity, I mean, getting to know the students in this community. There are so many leaders, I mean, and I think it's wonderful that, you know, we have peer members here that are not just here, they're not here for us, they're here for their own accomplishments. And I think that speaks for itself, and we're very proud of you guys. But it's important, you know, because when we're not there, they're going to have peers and people that they know that are in this community. And this is an opportunity for, you know, our Cedar Grove High School students to use some of their own strengths and bring that to our program, you know, for them to use their interests and their strong skills. And, you know, we encourage them to share ideas, you know, and to learn how to run these businesses. And, you know, it gives us an opportunity, again, to talk about, you know, social media presence and safety with our students, but also let them shine and use their skills as well. And again, this couldn't be possible without the wonderful support, you know, the high school, our administration. I mean, everyone has been extremely supportive, and we very much appreciate that. And our students helped make this slide, guys.
And I don't know if you saw when you first walked in, there was that table out there. There was a flyer for the Progressions Paws and the buttons. We also had some pamphlets, so if, you know, you're interested in learning more about the program, you could go ahead and grab some of those. We do have an Instagram page as well, so if you want to keep up on what we are doing on a weekly basis, go ahead and follow us on Instagram. Hashtag ProgressionsPierce. Fail.
We need to work on the hashtag.
We do need to work on the hashtag. I have it written down.
I've done it all the time.
I just wanted to say that, I know, obviously, I'm going to talk about my son for a moment, but Matthew and Maddie Foster are also part of the Peers Club. And the teachers are saying that, you know, the kids that are all part of, you know, the 17 of them really are very active with the club, going into with the kids and interacting with them. So, it's all about all the kids, but yeah.
Okay. Melissa and Erin, before you go, I just want to thank you both for your presentation tonight, and there's so many wonderful things about this program. And over the last several months, we have really gotten to know each other. But I want to just point out the, how much the board appreciates your dedication and your commitment to our students and what you do each day. So, I appreciated, the board appreciates, and I know the community appreciates it. And it's important that everyone knows that these two women are, and the other staff in the room. But I've had the privilege to really get to know the two of you. Your dedication is outstanding, so thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is our superintendent update.
I just have a few things for tonight. I have to share your sentiments also, that they have, this is the first year this has been in existence, and we saw how many things were actually accomplished. So, this is very impressive, very, very impressive, and what a wonderful opportunity to keep our students in district, and to have them be part of, you know, the community that they live in. Just a couple of things, you've kind of, the other board members kind of shared a little bit about this, but we talked, on June 8th, I actually participated in a Safe Schools partnership with the township, as well as the police department. We discussed opportunities moving forward, especially since we've, you know, we are dealing with the horrific events that took place in Texas, and how can we partner together? So, it was a great opening opportunity, and the availability of partnerships between the school district and the township, as well as the police department. So, very excited about that, and we will be having a lot more conversations about that. Also, was part of the pride celebration on the 9th. I want to also publicly thank Mr. Reggie Reginald Bledsoe from the county. He was our guest speaker, and also President Dora for your speech as well. It was very, very heartfelt, and it was wonderful. The, also attended the scholarship award ceremony, and Ms. Miga actually talked about the money and the recipients. It was absolutely outstanding, and I very much appreciate it to the donors and the opportunities that this awards our students as they move into secondary education. Went to the prom also on June 2nd over at the West Mount, which is very, very nice. It was a great opportunity. The kids were having a great time. One of the, one of the last hurrahs of high school life, and it was a wonderful time. I was glad they had the opportunity, even though the weather that night was, the beginning of the night was horrible, it was a downpour, but it was really a, it turned out to be a beautiful night. Also, you know, we talked about the security meeting. I want to thank all the community members that came out, and they were informed. I want to thank Mr. Bannon, Mr. DeVita, Mr. Kenny, and Mr. Soad from the, from Johnson Communications, which allowed us to talk about where we are, where we currently are, and where we will be going in the future. And, you know, lastly, I would like to, I just, and also, I attended the CGA retirement dinner earlier this afternoon, which was a really nice accomplishment. We also honored, they also honored the years of service for a lot of our teachers, and it was a beautiful, beautiful dinner. But I just want to take this opportunity, this is our last board meeting before we enter the summer months, and, you know, this year was a year where we started to move back into what we love and what we know, and this could have never been accomplished without the dedication of our administration, and especially our dedication of our teaching and our support staff. So, I want to thank them all publicly. This year was an extremely successful year, and we couldn't have done this without you. So, thank you very, very much. And I wish all this, the staff and the administrator, well, the administrators will be meeting all through the summer, but for a wonderful summer, and just to thank them again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to get, move in here. Under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Die.
Yes to B2 and B3, but I abstain to B1.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
I'm abstaining on B1 and yes to B2 and B3.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B4, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Die.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Yes. Under business, this is a lengthy one, can I have a motion for B5 through B69, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Die.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Bear with me, please. Yes, yep. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S47, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Die.
Yes to everything except S5 through S10.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes to everything, but I abstain from S47.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
And Mr. DeVita, I was abstaining from S5 to S10, not voting, no.
Yes.
All right. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S48 through S52, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Die.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under contracts, a motion for S53, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Die.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, at this point, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. The Board of Ed recognizes the value of the public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing its members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface your comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. Presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question or inquiry, if it is too lengthy, or is abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. So, on our sign-up today, we have four. First, Louis Sacala.
Hello? Hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, board members. My name is Louis Sacala, and I live at 83 Briarwood Terrace. I'm currently a senior here at Cedar Grove High School, and I'm here tonight because I'd like to speak with you about one of my teachers, Mrs. Robinson. As I'm sure you're aware, she's recently been punished over a trip she took with her AP Environmental Science class, which I'm a part of. However, I believe that this punishment is undeserved. Before I pref, excuse me, I'd like to preface why I believe this a little before I talk about the issue. So, I want to talk about Ms. Robinson as a teacher. I've had her for three years straight now, and each year has been a pleasure. Mrs. Robinson is not only kind, but also accommodating and understanding. She's always made class enjoyable while still keeping it challenging and thought-provoking to ensure we receive the best education possible. I want to reference my AP Chemistry class. I want to reference my AP Chemistry class from last year, which I had with Mrs. Robinson. AP Chem is frequently regarded as the single most difficult AP Advanced Placement class, and in my experience, I have to agree with that. It's extremely challenging, but despite this, four out of six students in that class last year actually received fives on the AP exam. And I think that this speaks volume to Mrs. Robinson's ability to teach difficult material and help students achieve their goals. And in my opinion, her work over the past few years has been invaluable to students like myself. And then onto the issue at hand. So last week, I think it was Wednesday, we went on a trip up to, a trip up to Mills Reservation during class and lunch period. This trip has been described as something that has threatened the safety of the students present, but I would disagree with this. And that's because Mrs. Robinson kept a close eye on us during the trip. We never once left her sight. And furthermore, like I said, we were only at Mills Reservation. It's a very popular spot within Cedar Grove, so I know I was very familiar with it, and most other students there would agree. It's somewhere that we've all been and somewhere that we feel comfortable at. I know there's also some concern over the fact that Mrs. Robinson drove a few students in her own car, but on this matter, I would just like to say that Mrs. Robinson was simply trying to accommodate for all the students because there was some trouble organizing rides. So to conclude, I don't believe that Mrs. Robinson should be punished over this. While I understand that liability is always an issue, the way I see it, this was just a small fun trip that she organized to reward our Environmental Science class for our entire year of hard work leading up to the AP exam. And I hope that you all can see eye to eye on me with this, and that you'll take the positions of myself and my classmates, because I could get thirty other kids up here that would agree with me on this. I hope you take our positions into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacala. And I would just like to thank you again. I appreciate you taking the time and speaking today, and it's just an example of the leadership in our, in our youth. So thank you. Next, we have Kim Nicoletti. Jason? I'm sorry, Jason, you wrote very small.
My name is Jason Crasno. I live at 44 Lewand Road. I, you might all recall from my last public comment before the board, am a twenty-four-year-old man with Tourette's Syndrome. No, not the cursing kind, the boring eyeball and shoulder twitching kind, and some sensory processing issues. I'm currently trying for an English degree at William Patterson University after a misguided attempt to try to for a chemistry degree at NJIT. The graduated cylinders are still spinning in my mind. I'd like to comment yet again on the state of special education in Cedar Grove. Let me just be clear before I begin speaking, that I'm not commenting in any regard on Mr. Kinney's work. Mr. Kinney, I want to offer you well-deserved congratulations on your selection as Director of the Year and on your years of fruitful work in the district. Thank you so much, Mr. Kinney. Some of us in this room, I'm not going to name names here, and I may have written the speech when the room was a bit fuller, so this may not be entirely accurate. I would rather not congratulate. While Cedar Grove's many compassionate, supportive, intelligent teaching staff worked to help me and people like me find our way through a system that, in the best of situations, wasn't designed for us, you took care of the important things, like making sure that nobody was able to receive any of the accommodations or supports that their entitled, coddled, undisciplined peers in other districts received. You made the lives of the compassionate, warm-hearted people, both teachers and students, in our schools that much harder. I'd like to take a break from my diatribe to again recognize Mr. Kinney, and also give a special shout out to Mr. Mark Gurgis, who isn't here today but filled that same sort of role for me during my time in the district. In the name of moving beyond this difficult past that pitted our community members and staff against each other, let's try to usher in a time in our town when young people don't have to fear appearing different. Let's try to make it so they don't have to flatter, dodge, weave, and cajole to make it through their Cedar Grove experience. Yes, I am an English meter. I appreciate the effort placed toward adults with more significant support needs, which I heard expressed today. I really do applaud that effort. I think it's a great effort. I'm all here for it. That being said, let's not pretend that more broadly than what I just said about some of the worst offenders in our community, we don't sometimes mock, demean, and abuse those who present more of a threat than those people to our town's status quo, or, I'm not letting anyone off the hook here, what we'd like our town to become. I myself said and did things I now regret in the past. I think everyone in this room either has or is lying. In the past, like, again, all of us, I held some different views and different ideas about my and others' places in the world. I'm not asking you to grovel, or feel bad, or feel shame, or even to feel anything. I'm asking you all to see that this kind of mean-spiritedness, this act of going after someone who's not smart enough, or too smart and disagreeable with your sensibilities, too sensitive and artistic, or too rigid and mechanical, or too floppy and uncoordinated, is no way to live, and certainly no way to leave a lasting impression on Cedar Grove children. Can we move beyond anti-bullying contracts and painted-on kindness, which leave our kids struggling to climb out of a hole that often isn't of their own making? Can we leave our kids better, not worse off, when they leave Cedar Grove schools? As of six years ago, almost to the day when I left the Cedar Grove School District, the answer was no. I hope to God that can change.
Next, we have Mr. Leo Stringer.
Good evening. Leo Stringer for Hyatt Terrace. I just have a question. On last meeting, we talked about school buses, and I believe we're getting three new school buses for this coming year. And I don't really have the details because I quickly went through the agenda tonight. The transportation budget still looks pretty detailed for next year. Will these buses replace the buses we had this year? Or is that going to take maybe a couple of years to get them in place, and who will be driving them? It's kind of, we don't really have, there's really no detail. It's just saying we're getting, we're buying school buses. So we don't really know who's going to be driving these buses. Will they replace the routes that we have?
Well, I'm going to just comment on it, and then Mr. DeVita can give you the details of the overarching goal. And Mr. DeVita has shared this in his budget presentation for the past two years, is that we are engaging in developing our own fleet. The cost of transportation has severely increased, severely. And Mr. DeVita can definitely go into that, but the ultimate goal is, is that if we can develop our own fleet, we would not necessarily have to incur the cost of outsourcing. But, Mr. DeVita, could you go in a little bit more detail about that?
Thank you. Yes, some of our routes, on tonight's agenda, the board approved some routes that were bid. Normally, we, the contractors, we can renew the bids, or the routes without bidding them if they agree to it, but none of them agreed to it, so they all wanted them to be rebid. So if you see some of the numbers on here, some of the routes are over four dollars, one's over five hundred dollars a day. So not all of the routes were approved. Three of those routes that would normally have gone out of district, now we're going to be taking them over. So we will be hiring our own bus drivers to handle those routes. So that'll save us the money. We'll have the one-time expense of paying for the buses, but then we'll be saving it every year by only having the expense of the salary of the driver, and we won't be paying, some of the routes are, if it's four or five dollars a day, that can range from, you know, seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year as an expense to us. So, you know, this year, we're, last year we did one bus, or the current year we did one bus, next year we're going to do three buses. And then we hope to build that so then we don't have to outsource any of the buses, and then we would have our own fleet.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I just have one other question. On Monday evening, Mr. Rosso and Mr. Kinney were kind enough to put together a safety presentation, which I find was very helpful. And I think it was really more helpful, really helpful for people that haven't been in district in the past few years, because I remembered it from we first, we first did it. And it's good to see that most of what was put into the bond is now coming to light. Of course, with COVID, things were delayed, understood. But a few questions, more than a few people asked the same question about armed guards in a school. And I know you may not have an answer tonight, but it's kind of putting out for the community to know that that's, that's a question a lot of people do have. That probably is time to come. Time has come, is rather than putting teachers at risk of watching doorways and things, it's something that, if you have an answer tonight, great, but I, I know you understand, you may not. But it's something that we had put out there, hopefully we're looking into.
Yeah, no, sure. I mean, thank you, Mr. Stringer. Appreciate you coming the other night, too, and thank you for sharing your insight into that. We did speak about that. That was definitely heavily discussed that night. And one of the things that we did discuss was that this would be a more of a serious conversation. We do understand that there are differing opinions in the community, but that night really did open a conversation, which obviously has to be more, more of that to happen amongst the community and amongst ourselves, you know, as a board, as well as our, our police department or township. So we, that is something that we will definitely be looking into.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stringer. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.